Good afternoon. We will now call a meeting of the Waco City Council, March 3rd, 2020, to order at 3:00 PM. Welcome to our guests. All council members are present. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you and all the council members. There is one change to the agenda. We posted an addendum on Friday afternoon, and so those should be included in your packet, and we will be reviewing that as part of my report. There's also an updated exhibit page at your places for Resolution 2020-144. We had a mistake on the available money and the abandoned motor vehicle fund, so we wanted to correct that. Under employee recognition and organizational updates, I'd like to acknowledge the great work of our executive staff, all those folks sitting over there, and in transitioning the department realignments that we did last October to better address city council priorities. In particular, Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson has led the effort to restructure the Housing and Code Compliance Department and the Public Health Department to ensure each performs efficiently. In addition to Deidre, I'd like to thank Galen Price and Dr. Brenda Gray for their work with Deidre to bring these changes forward, and I think this is really good work. The reorganizations and restructuring were directly tied to the priorities that council has set. Also, I'd like to commend the work done by Bradley Ford, Clint Peters, and Jonathan Cook. Something similar there. They successfully restructured Planning Department to incorporate Inspection Services into that department, and Jonathan Cook has restructured the Parks and Recreation Department. These departmental restructuring have put resources in place and to better respond to the council's priorities. And then I'd also like to recognize Mrs. Koshka, HR Director, and her team because they participated in reviewing these organizational changes to make sure we keep them consistent across the city organization, and so I want to thank them for all their great work there. And then also on my list of departmental news, we had posted a Solid Waste Director position, and we have decided to take that posting down. Chuck Dowdell, our interim Director of Solid Waste, has agreed to a request from Assistant City Manager Paul Kane and myself to postpone his retirement and stay with the city for a little while, so we really do appreciate that. That's a great relief because he brings such tremendous experience to the Solid Waste Department, so. Thanks, Chuck. Also, I'd like to recognize our new Assistant City Manager, Ryan Holt. Ryan is bringing a wealth of experience to the city manager's office at a time when public safety is a top council priority, and his leadership experience will now benefit the entire city organization. I'm really excited about that because he does bring a good, fresh perspective up there for us, and like I said, it will elevate the discussion about public safety. So I appreciate Ryan agreeing to step up there. And then, of course, I'd like to recognize our new Deputy City Manager Bradley Ford. Bradley will be transitioning to overseeing all city operations. Deidre, Paul, and Ryan have my gratitude for their continued support as Bradley transitions to his new role as Deputy City Manager, so thank you, Bradley, and thank all of you for your great work. Okay, there are two informal reports for you today. The first is BikeWay, AKA Bicycle Infrastructure Planning and Implementation Informal Report, and I believe Chris Avili is here if y'all have any particular questions on that one.
Just appreciate that update. I think it's great that we have an NPO and a city staff who is showing their commitment to making sure that our city is bikeable and that we're forward-thinking and strategic when it comes to our planning and approach to this.
Yeah, I'll echo Dylan there. I think it's good that we are thoughtful about how we put our biking connectivity together is a big thing to me because as we invest in Washington Street and make it the first sort of protected bike lane with the curb and the whole thing, I think it's important that that street connects on to other kind of recognized bike paths. And if you look at page 12 of the presentation today, I think it's a great-looking, just a map of the pathways, the different ways we can go from there. And again, as you can see, there's quite a few as you add in the bike paths on the River Walk, as we add in that Washington one, and I need to get some clarification on the Elm Avenue. That is not going to be a protected bike lane, right? It's going to be a path, but not protected, curbed or whatever we call it?
That's correct.
So the Washington Avenue one will remain the only one in town that has the curbing on it?
Yes, sir, for now.
Right, and surely the only one planned. The other question I had was the Columbus Avenue one that's shown as a, what is it? It's a pink line, bike route, shared lane. Will that go away once we get Washington Street completed?
We suspect after Washington's complete, we'll meet with the bike community again, and we expect that one will probably go away and Washington takes place.
Good. And there is a cycling map out there for all the people. It's a pretty cool deal. And as Dylan said, and I think as we all feel, this multimodal, we want to get more people biking, and I think this is a great start to getting people into the downtown area with that protected lane and get people around the River Walk. I think it's going to be fantastic. Thanks for the report.
Well, and the only thing I'll add to that is that one of the concerns or objections to increased investment in this that I've, really the only one I routinely hear about is that nobody really sees people using them, but I think that especially, and I appreciate Councilmember Holmes calling it multimodal, as we consider these scooters are about to come to town, I think there's going to be a lot more utilization of these shared bike and multimodal paths, and hopefully there'll be some data sharing alongside that from Lime so we could be able to map out where we might want to provide additional facilities, particularly within our core and the area that these are going to be mapped out and used from. So, but no, I think it's, I appreciate y'all's information. I like the, I'm glad that we have a plan. I'm glad we're adhering to it and following it as we're doing our street repair and construction work, and looking forward to continued investment in pedestrian multimodal access within our city.
Thank you again for the presentation. I am, you know, the one who is diligent about communication, so one, I want to appreciate and congratulate the CVB for having information pamphlet on the bike pathways that are available. So for our visitors who come in town, you know, there is just a readily available pamphlet that'll tell you exactly which paths are available to go to, so I appreciate that insight for that. The other part is, is as we progress with areas like Herring, that's a fast-moving area, so I want to make sure that we have as much information about the changes that are coming as possible because I live off Herring and, yeah, it's a little quick, so I want to make sure that people who own bikes are safe, and so we want to make sure that we get as much information, just period, and that's just public service announcements because everyone drives that path, especially with the I-35 construction. But I appreciate the insight and the progress moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And the second informal report is an update on the Coronavirus Disease 2019, and Dr. Brenda Gray, our Health District Director, is here if y'all have any particular questions on that.
No questions on this. I do want to thank you, Dr. Gray, for the report. As we all know, there is a lot of attention surrounding the coronavirus right now, and I appreciate you being visible in our community. I even saw you on a TV station last night interviewing you about the virus, and so I know it is a concern that is facing our constituents right now, and even though we have not seen, thankfully, any cases in our county, but for the people to know that Waco and McLennan County are preparing just in case there is such an outbreak or even a case of that, and so I really do appreciate your due diligence in putting this together. I also appreciate, last night I was exploring the Health District's website, and what a profound and useful resource that is, that you can see even facts and myths about the virus itself, and also being able to see where it is active and how close it is to home and if it is even close at all and what those are resulting in, and so I think anything that we can do to put our constituents' mind at ease and our communities' mind at ease is so appreciative, and so thank you so much for addressing this because I know there is a lot of attention around this virus, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Can you cover the podium, please? Thank you, Dr. Gray.
To the dais and city leadership here, I just want to say it's a team effort, and I have about five of my team here, so I want to have them stand and recognize I can't do this alone, and I want to just show my support. You guys sent it real quick for me so that they know we have a strong bench in the Health District.
What I appreciate most is that with the interactive website from the Health District, it is combating misinformation because I think that's one of the biggest adversaries we have in this virus period, is the just onslaught of misinformation. So, you know, take care of ourselves. I mean, communicating to our constituents that, you know, take care of yourself like you would because it's cold and flu season. Wash your hands often. If you're sick, stay at home. Do the things that we all can do to help take care of each other, but I appreciate your dedication to squashing myths and bringing full, complete information and staying on top and informed with all of the other major national health information organizations as well, so we appreciate you.
I'll just echo that, too. Dr. Gray, thanks for putting that together, and I appreciate your leadership in this regard, and reassuring people. It's a reassuring tone that, you know, we're ready. Waco community is ready in case anything happens. I think it's important. There's no need to panic or anything. We're on top of it. Also, it's talking in the community with the Hillcrest people, the Providence people, Scott and White people. I like how our communities kind of come together and we're staying ahead of this whole thing, and I think the messaging is right, you know. We're aware of it. We're concerned, but we're ready, so I appreciate that reassuring tone, Dr. Gray.
To add to Jim, I think not just the existing healthcare providers in the community, but also even police and fire and schools, there's a lot of people who I think are working strategically with our Public Health District to make sure we're prepared for this, and I appreciate that as well. And one thing I would just, you know, encourage our city staff to do is also think through, from an operations perspective, implications if this virus does continue to spread. I know I've talked to city staff, and it sounds like everyone's thinking strategically about what happens if quarantine's going to place, and I think that, you know, we still want our garbage to be collected and to be able to turn on the sink and water come out, and I think that it's great that we have a city staff who's thinking ahead like that as well. So what do we do in all sorts of situations? So I'm really appreciative to the staff for the public health side of this conversation, but also from the operations side of this conversation.
Yeah, and I'll just say, we are aware that you are communicating constantly with the other members of the professionals in the health care here in Waco, and staying on top of this, and also with the national and international information that's coming in. I agree with Andrea, that trying to get accurate information out is the key to this, and I appreciate all the great work y'all are doing to do that and have complete confidence in the work that you're doing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. And now I'd like to invite Larry Hozie to give the Hozie Report.
All right. Thank you so much. If everybody will turn your attention to your monitors, got some great pictures to share with you. An online money magazine, Money Incorporated, has listed the top 20 attractions to see while visiting Waco, and five city-run sites made the top six. After a visit to Magnolia Silos, the Cameron Park Zoo came in second, followed by the Mammoth National Monument, third, Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum was fourth, and the Waco Suspension Bridge and Cattle Drive Sculpture was fifth, and rounding out the top six is the beautiful Cameron Park. Great recognition for an outstanding bunch of attractions run by the city. The Waco Fire Department hosted the first of several hands-only CPR training events at all local fire stations on February 22nd and 29th. Our fire station has teamed up with American Heart Association to educate the community in hands-only CPR, which is a way for a bystander to step in and save the life of an adult or teen who has collapsed due to a cardiac arrest. Additional opportunities to learn this simple one-hand CPR will be Saturday, March 7th and March 14th, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, all in 13 Waco fire stations. A free microchipping clinic was held on Saturday, February 22nd, at the Waco Animal Shelter that helped 78 animals be in compliance with the city's microchip ordinance. Those who came to the animal shelter also received information on special free spay and neuter programs provided by the city community leaders. The new brush ordinance communication plan is underway. That includes a link on the city's website to a homepage to a new full page that has all the information easily displayed, as well as a link to three-minute videos available in both English and Spanish. We're also starting on our social media posts and booths. A front-page article in the City Limits newsletter will come out in the March Water Bills. A City Talk 30-minute radio program and podcast, which also aired as a TV version on our City Cable channel aired last week, and an attractive flyer that will be inserted in the April Water Bills that is printed in both English and Spanish. And here is an example of the TV spot that will be running on several channels this week and on the Waco City Cable.
It's not going to work.
Not going to work.
It's not going to work.
Four by four by four, Dan.
A brush pile has to be four foot by four foot by four foot, picked up in your green
That version was a 60-second version, but we are running a little shorter version of that on several local TV stations as well. The installation of City Waco Seal was completed over the past weekend on the first floor of City Hall. Following the removal of the receptionist desk back in 2013, a kiosk was placed in the center spot, but the technology changes, new display monitors were installed, and the center spot of the floor needed a makeover. A 34-inch square area was carefully cut during the weekend of February 22nd, and the seal was put in place and covered with several layers of epoxy. The work was all done after hours and on weekends to minimize noise, odor, and other things that might be objectionable to visitors. The final result is a beautiful addition to Waco's 90-year-old Waco City Hall. Following the recent rains we've had, the level of Lake Waco has gained almost five feet since February 7th. The normal level is 462, and as of noon today, it was at 461.04. Coming up, Better Streets Waco Public Outreach Meeting was scheduled for Wednesday, March 18th, at 6:00 PM at China Spring Intermediate School Cafeteria at 4001 Flat Rock Road from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. During this meeting, residents can talk with city staff, engineers, and contractors to learn about streets and road improvements planned in that area. And next week will be a busy week throughout the city when spring break kicks off for all local kids. And that completes my report.
Great report, Larry. Thanks for keeping us up on all the great things that are going on around Waco. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor, council, there are 12 resolutions this afternoon. The first I'd like to highlight is Resolution 2020-146, which actually will be covered by our Executive Director of Economic Development, Milet Harrison, during the work session. Resolution 2020-148 approves the submission of an e-grant application to the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $2 million for the purchase of fire apparatus, and 1.8 million of that would be federal funds with a $200,000 local match. And I want to particularly thank interim Fire Chief Kevin McGee for his work on this, and we appreciate him working to move this grant application forward. Also under resolutions, Resolution 2020-152 approves a change order to contract with TTG Utilities for South 26th Street Improvements Project for an additional construction services not to exceed $95,000. This work will encompass the necessary sanitary sewer design changes to safely avoid a communication line conflict that was discovered and investigated in September. This project is approximately 35% complete, but has used 82% of its elapsed time, and there's been a number of franchise utility conflicts here, design adjustments that had to be made with that, and then also we've been waiting on some of the utility conflicts to be corrected by the franchise utility. There's been a lot of adjustments being made over there so that we can reconstruct the street, so we've had to extend the timeline on it, and we would anticipate 100% completion of the project in the fall, but the paving portion between Bagby and Dutton, I think, will be complete by the end of May.
I just want to say thank you, Wiley, for the update on this project. I know that there has been some complications along the way, for lack of better words, and I do appreciate staff's diligence under the direction of Assistant City Manager Paul Kane, and, you know, Paul has been readily available to speak to my constituents there along the street, and anytime they have questions, he's been readily available to speak with them on the phone or meet with them in person, and so I'm very excited that we're moving forward with this project. I know it's been taking a little longer than we've all wanted it to, but I know that also the staff and the crew that's there every single day are working hard and just trying to make sure that it's done right the first time, so it's not, we're not having complications down the road, and so, and no pun intended, but thank you so much for that.
I'm going to go back to Resolution 150. I just want to point out that in the material, in the background materials, there was, where we bought the articulated dump truck from Holcat, you showed Byboard showed a, there were no comparable electric articulated dump trucks. I know that Kelly Holcheck is out, she's with us today, is making an extra effort to show or demonstrate that there is an alternative electric vehicle alternative, and it was in the materials that there was no comp, so I appreciate the awareness there on the latest technology and the fact that we are going through that with Byboard and getting that comp. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Resolution 2020-154 approves a change order to the contract with Thale Construction Company for the WMRS Transfer Lift Station and Force Main project in an amount not to exceed $222,283. This is a critical part of the project. Thale Construction is laying a 54-inch force main coming out of the transfer lift station. It ran into a conflict with the old force main. We had to make an adjustment there. This is an excellent price to get this work done, and we need to get this completed so that we can complete the project. Under ordinances, there are eight today. The ordinance, first ordinance is a first reading, and I'd like to ask our Director of Planning and Inspection Services, Clint Peters, to explain the details on this item.
And Mayor and Council, Councilmember Meek has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on this item.
Clint Peters, Planning and Inspection Services. This ordinance would remove the on-parking prohibition for short-term rentals located on streets classified as a collector arterial street where on-street parking is not restricted. Currently, our ordinance does require off-street parking for all SDRs, one per bedroom. That rule will still be in place. This would just take off the prohibition of on-street parking for short-term rentals on our arterial and collector streets. Originally, when this ordinance was put in place, the intent was to provide some protection for local residential streets, and as we've applied this ordinance over the last two and a half years, it's been hard to enforce, especially where you have mixed-use areas on larger streets where you have a lot of on-street parking. It's been hard to enforce that ordinance, and that really wasn't the intent of the original ordinance, so we are recommending that that on-street parking prohibition be removed for just the collectors and arterials.
Clint, the collectors and arterials, I mean, I think I like the way this is worded because we're still protecting it if it's in deep into a residential neighborhood that are residential streets, and somebody's converting their home to an SDR or allowing it for an SDR, and they permit it and everything. We still are not allowing them to park on the street, unless it's on a kind of a main. Maybe describe what the arterial or collector is a little bit.
Sure, and I have a map if y'all seen this, but I can pass it out if y'all want to see all the collectors. Example of collectors and arterial streets, and we actually have the licensed SDRs that we have to date. There's 38 of these that are on collectors, arterials, and those streets are 4th Street, 5th Street, Austin Avenue, Clay, Washington, Sanger, Wooded Acres. Those would be examples of collectors and arterials. You are correct, the local streets would still have that prohibition on it, so your local residential streets would still have the prohibition of on-street parking.
Got it. Thanks.
Yeah, I can see how it would be very, very close to impossible to enforce.
Yep.
And I don't know if there would be any way to improve that.
The concern I've had is, you know, these are wide streets. There's plenty of room for, all of them that I've seen, there's plenty of room for on-street parking. There was definitely a problem when we were talking about the narrow streets in the neighborhoods and blocking traffic, so I feel like it strikes a pretty good balance.
I agree.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Clint. The remaining ordinances are all second readings, and as I mentioned earlier, we did issue an addendum last Friday and has a public hearing and a resolution in it, and I'd like to ask Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson to cover those two items.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. If you recall, in June of last year, you heard an update from the Waco Housing Authority, and that update included information regarding the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and as a result of that, implementation of the RAB program will impact three specific properties, Estella Maxine, Kate Ross, and South Terrace. Because the Housing Authority has taken a phased approach on, today on your agenda, you'll see that there is a public hearing as well as an additional resolution. The public hearing will be held to seek community input on a resolution not objecting to the development of the affordable housing, and the resolution essentially is acknowledging that the affordable housing project is being developed within a census tract that is greater than 40%, and so those two items are on your agenda for consideration today.
I just thank you, Deidre, for the information. I want to make sure, and I know we talked about this when the presentation was made to council last summer, last June, that as we are working on these complexes and as they are being remodeled and as they are being updated, which by the way, I think it's a very great idea and a needed thing for these complexes, that we are keeping track and we have a strategic plan of a relocation strategy for the people that live in these complexes at a time. I would hate that they are being moved around, for lack of better words, as chess pieces, that you have some here, some there, and that we are prepared to house them in a temporary location, but that it's also going to be a location that's going to try to make sure that we provide as less inconvenience as possible for our families that live there, especially when we have our babies and our kids in a specific school district, and they are busing to schools and making sure that they are not having to travel long lengths of time to go to school in the morning, or people are not having to travel long lengths of time to get to work. And so I just want to make sure that up to this day, and I know we said we're working on it, but I have not heard a strategy yet, and so I would like to get a little bit more details about that if possible.
Well, as the Housing Authority representation will be here this evening to speak on the item as well, and so those are questions that we can work with them to make sure we get responses back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no questions, that concludes my report. Any questions? All right.
Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, then the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2020-144 through 2020-155, unless a visitor card is received on any consent agenda item. And I'll ask Wiley to continue with the work session presentations.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, our first work session presentation is a discussion of the Brazos Prominent Development, including a proposed the Brazos Promenade development, including a proposed amendment to the development agreement with Catalyst Urban Development LLC. Mallette Harrison will be here for that, as our Executive Director of Economic Development. Mallette?
After those reports. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for hearing us today. I have with me also, mostly to field questions that you might have, Paris Rutherford and Reese Heinz from Catalyst Urban Development LLC. So, I'll be giving just an overview of the project and what we're asking of you today, and then they can also chime in for any color commentary, or just provide answers to your questions, should you have them. So, we're here today to talk about an item for your consideration to amend the current development agreement with Catalyst Urban Development LLC. Also, we commonly refer to that as a riverfront project, me probably more so than anyone else, so when I say riverfront, through this presentation, that is what I mean. We're talking about this particular development project that is also called Brazos Promenade or Riverfront. So, I just wanted to clarify that for anybody who might be watching out there on TV or in the audience that might not be aware of that. So, just a little update for you of where we are. This would, RFP process that the city issued, request for proposals. We wanted to develop this acreage that we have along the riverfront. Brazos Promenade project was proposed by Catalyst Urban Development. They are, they were one of many. We had a few respondents, but we chose to work with Catalyst Urban on this particular project and had been proceeding on that forward. So, I wanted to give you just a quick overview of some of the scope of the project, and also some of the proposals of what we hope to accomplish here, so you're aware, as is everyone else. This would just be a bird's eye view, really from the river. So, in this project, you see what is Webster Avenue extended down actually to the riverside, and parts of phases one, two, and three in this particular view that shows the multifamily development, the hotel there, the tall building on the right, and then restaurant commercial space there, just in the very foreground, right beside the river. As a refresher, this is a four-phase development, so the vast majority of that will occur in phase one. We have a good amount of, all the multifamily development, you see those buildings there labeled A, B, and C, that are at the intersection of Webster and University Parks, as well as a commercial piece that is there at the corner of University and, University Parks and Webster. The farmer's market area and the improvements that are being done there, and also several improvements that are being done up and down the length of the university parks, from, really from Franklin to I-35. That is a large part of the project, and that is all included in phase one. Up in the top corner here, in sort of the orange outline, would be the hotel site. The purplish here along the river would be restaurant and open venue space, and then here along, in the yellow outline, is also intended to be additional commercial space and possibly open venue space as well. So, just another view of like, the more full scope of that, that shows you literally from Franklin Avenue along University Parks all the way to I-35, the length of the university parks that will be touched with this project and improved, as well as the blocks that are being, everything here in the sort of red hatched outline, just gives you a little bit further scope. So, just gonna go through a few of the renderings, just to refresh everybody's mind about some of the improvements that will be coming with this. This is a more close-up view of the farmer's market area, which everybody knows is that really pretty grove of oak trees down near the river where the farmer's market used to be before they are now located up by the courthouse. And we do hope that they will be back down here again very soon, when this project is ready and completed. So, just showing you a little bit about the event space, that it will be, amenities around it, and also, this is just a view of it a little bit closer and a view without the trees shown. This is not an indicator that the trees will go away. This is simply showing you the plaza space and sort of what it would look like a little bit, as just an event venue, that what it has to offer and what it will be. It will be a really great space for the farmer's market to take advantage of, the spaces to pull through, excuse me, but it will also be a great space at times when it's not the farmer's market area, and so this is a really good view of that space just from the user As we move on to a view of university parks, there is a plan for that road to be put on a diet, so to speak, so some lane, some lanes will be either shrunk or taken away. We have an attempt to make the median a little more urban scale, a little less suburban, which it has been from its original design. And the, one of the most important pieces is the attention to trying to have bike lanes in this section. Where it's possible, there will be protected bike lanes, and that is predominantly just right beside the development that Catalyst is doing, but we do hope for the future that there could be actually protected lanes throughout the length of this project. Maybe not within this project itself, but in future improvements to university parks that protect the bike lanes, or future developments along university parks, we could incorporate that as well. But there will be either protected bike lanes or shared bike lanes within the redo of university parks that is redone with phase one. Just another view of the kind of high-profile corner of Webster and university parks. This was a little bit earlier iteration of the renderings, and this is the more recent view, so this is the closer to what is planned to be built on the ground. So, very similar, slightly different color palette, a little bit more detail on the pedestrian amenities and the space there for where traffic comes and goes and the intersection as you approach it. Another view of that, just a little bit, same building, just as you go down Webster towards the river, just giving you a view of some of those multifamily units and the live-work space there on the ground floor. So, back to the project we are supposed to be talking about today, now that we've done the overview. Catalyst is requesting an amendment to the development plans and the development agreement between the city and the developer, and it is all specifically regarding this phase one of the project. The commencement deadline was to commence on February 7th of 2020, so it was to commence already. However, they have requested an additional timeframe up until March 20th to allow us to bring this amendment to you today, because during the design process, there were several amenities that were requested, upsizing of utilities that were a cost factor, and so it was prudent for them to ask us to get that money secured for the things that we wanted done before they started the project. So, that is really the bulk of why we are here today, past that view and your consideration. So, the development agreement would be amended, and specifically to phase one. Within phase one, the electric lines that were originally scheduled to be moved and relocated in phase two will be moved into phase one. No cost associated with that, just a change in phase. What the additional funds are being requested for is for upsized utilities, which the city requested, in some cases, very large-scale upsizing of sewer line and storm drain, and some additional public improvements that were requested during the design process. So, I'm gonna go into that just a little bit more. For the upsized and additional utilities, the storm water, storm drain system that was going down Webster was not very robust, not very large. Through this design process, the engineers felt it was, it was a prudent thing to do, ours, that we create some much larger storm drain to handle the storm runoff that happens in downtown and would also happen with this development, but predominantly from things that are coming upstream from it. And we also went through the process of getting a permit from the Corps of Engineers to allow that to go straight down Webster and into the Brazos River there, and not have to go into other storm drain in other areas. Excuse me. So, traffic signal will be needed at university parks in Webster, so this would allow for the cost of that. Some of those bike lanes were not contemplated by Catalyst in their original design, but were requested by city staff, and we do believe that's a good idea, so accommodating for those, given our new, and hopefully even enhanced, bike lane usage that could be upcoming in the near future. The farmer's market area had some basic plans for it. This will accommodate the additional electrical and amenities that they requested in the early, in those public input meetings, so some water feature play area, and also, there are some new gas line that will need to be installed along Webster. Some will be done with the franchisee, with our, with Atmos. They will handle some of the relocations, but this would be some new gas line. So, the staff recommendation before you today is for additional funding in the amount of We would recommend that we amend a TIF contract that is currently an award of $8 million for remediation to the site. That has not been used and does not anticipate being used near its entire value. So, we have the ability to amend that TIF grant, which is from the, straight to the city. That was our remediation grant for the site, because that had to be done, no matter what developer actually did a development on the site. But we recommend that funds be taken from that, and then, there would still be sufficient funding, probably at least $4 million left in that amount, should any other remediation issues arise. So, to do that, we would have to take that, obviously, to the TIF board at their next meeting on April 9th, and then back to you for consideration on the 5th and the 19th. In the meantime, there could be general funds assigned to this, should, for some reason, the general fund would need to step up if the TIF amendment is not done and you do not choose to use those funds in that way for that existing TIF grant for remediation to allow the additional funds to come out of that. General fund balance would need to be assigned more specifically to this, and a general fund budget amendment would be needed. But, we believe it would be a good use of these funds, and it's a public improvement to, that is eligible for TIF funds, if we did it with the existing TIF funds that are set aside for remediation, of which we will not use all. I'm sorry, I'm almost done. So, just to go over the project timeline, it was to commence construction on the 7th of this month, so just a few days ago. Well, a month ago. We proposed the change date, the construction commencement date to be March 20th. Phase one completion is still anticipated to be February 7th of 2023. And just so you know, all the other three phases, two, three, and four, can commence in any order, that's been the deal from the outset, their commencement deadlines, so they must start two, three, or four, and/or four, by February 7th, 2023. But whenever they start, because they can start sooner, they have three years for completion of each of those phases as they happen. So, with that, I'll open it for questions.
Did Paris have any comments that he wanted to make, or not?
It's been a long road. We're here, we've got our permits in hand, we're ready to get moving. We appreciate the diligence that your staff has gone through in the process to make sure that the broader area of the city is covered by the improvements that we're talking about here. So, it's been a good process to work through. It's a very complicated area of the city, it's a lot of old infrastructure. Good news is, we've got all that designed and we're ready to go.
Thanks, Paris. I know that when this project started, I first got on council, I didn't have near this much gray in my beard. Wow.
I resemble that, Mark.
But, I'm very excited about it, it's transformative, it has a chance to be a great economic driver for downtown. And really, the first part of the delay in this project was the environment, getting the environmental issue cleared up, which ended up saving us about $7 million, plus or minus, so I think that was worth the wait from a taxpayer perspective. And really, I think we're very excited to see this happening in the next month here, and to the public improvements, the 2.8 million, I think that's well in line with what we're trying to get done here, particularly in light of the fact that we didn't have to spend the 8 million. So, then those public improvements, I think, are needed to get this thing launched, and I'm excited that in less than three weeks, we'll have something going there. Paris, do you see any hurdles in the next few weeks, or there's some, anything that you're concerned about now, if we can get this 2.8 kind of in place? Are you feeling pretty good about, is there any other, anything else we need to iron out before we can get going?
I mean, we need to get through tonight and then get moving. So, we're, we continue to be on the path we've been on. We've been in a good spot for quite a while, it's just getting the engineering completed as it relates to the improvements that we're talking about here, that's been kind of what the focus has been, and then the funding that supports that. Obviously, we can't close on a loan if we, if there's not enough money to complete the larger infrastructure that was requested of us in the process, because the building won't have anything to drain into.
Sure.
So, you know, understandably, that's, that's been kind of the recent issue that's come up, and we appreciate the opportunity for you all to consider this so that we can advance.
Great. I appreciate staff and everyone working together to make sure that we have the infrastructure that we need for the future. I think that's smart. Do you think there's any chance, assuming tonight goes as you expect it to, you'll break ground sooner than March 20th?
Yeah, I would say, the next critical path we have is, as Paris mentioned, permits ready and headed, secondary thing is amendment to the development agreement, capital is secured. We have a 10-day process to file notice with the state, even though we have full clean closure on the environmental, we still have to provide them notice, we've done that, and we would have to extend that request, but I anticipate will be other likely before the 20th.
So, what's the soonest?
I would say soonest we would see mobilization would be in the next week.
Okay. So, like, 13, 14 days?
Yeah.
Has the scope of...
Dylan will be out there with a shovel, by the way.
Has the scope of the project changed in terms of square footage for retail and restaurant since we last met?
No, I mean, the scope is, the scope continues to be the same, we're working within that. We are in active discussions on the future phases right now as well. Our goal is to, you know, get all this moving, kind of lay the groundwork so that those other phases can move pretty quickly, which, you know, we're hopeful they will. We're having a fair amount of interest, which is positive.
So, the actual river, the restaurant retail scope on the river is technically phase three, is that correct?
Yes.
And that hasn't been finalized, what exactly is going there, what exactly that looks like?
Yeah, we're not in a place where we can tell you names, but we are, we're having good conversations.
But what about like, square footage, number of retail spaces, is that up for discussion still, or is that...
We're looking at, in what you have there is phase three, we're looking at one large operator there, and then in phase four, that would be two separate operators. And then in the hotel on phase two, there's about 11,000 feet of retail, as I recall, and that would be comprised of two restaurants and then some smaller shops. But that's, we're working through that right now.
So, you're thinking, ground floor of hotel would be two restaurants and some shops, one user for phase three, and then two users for phase four?
Yeah, there is some potential there could be two users in phase three, but as it is right now, it's one larger user.
And, I know that at one point, we talked about, you'd said that there's something like, I don't know what you'd call it, like some sort of flex use, it's like started off as apartments, but easily was transitioned into office space. Is that still in the plans for this?
Yeah, the ground-level units can comprise someone's ability to operate a home office, essentially, and they can hang their shingle out front. We have it set up that way still, to be able, for someone to be able to operate in that manner.
Thank you so much, Mallette, for the presentation. Paris, thank you for being here as well. I'm very excited about this project. I'm definitely excited to see us moving forward with it. I know it's been a long time waiting, and there's been anticipation game, so I really do appreciate your diligence. Mallette, I might have missed this, and please forgive me if I did, but under the additional public improvements, what was included in that besides the upsized utilities that the city requested?
Sure, so there were upsized utilities, and I'm sorry, I may have skipped over that, but there were upsized utilities for the city, which were a very large storm drain, a very large sewer at Main, and also some additional water lines. That also did include the bike lanes and some of the, sorry, let me get to my cheat sheet. The traffic signal there at university parks in Webster, that was not contemplated in the original, we knew it might be, but we had to wait for the traffic impact discussions. The bike lanes, some additional things for the farmer's market area that they wanted, so some additional amenities beyond...
so some additional amenities beyond just, like, electric and water for them to get to at their sites and whatnot. And also, some additional gas line infrastructure that needs to be placed in.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry if I missed that, I didn't know if I just looked over it. But, you know, so going back, you know, thank you, I appreciate your diligence on this, I'm looking forward to it, and, and if there is anything we can do on our end to help the process quicker, please let us know. But I appreciate your partnership up until this point, so thank you.
Thank you. What else?
Thank you all very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Malette. I'd like to ask Deputy City Manager Bradley Ford to introduce the next item.
Thanks, Wiley, Mayor and Council. In the theme of this evening, we have another project that's taken a few years to get in front of you. Tonight, we're joined, Chelsea Flegger from our staff, Senior Planner at the MPO, is joined by representatives from Lyme to give you a proposal, give you an overview of Shared Mobility Pilot Program, something the city's been actively engaged in a conversation on for well over two years. And I think over that two years, we've found out a lot about some best practices from around the country. So, I appreciate Chelsea staying on it, and I appreciate the council's patience in letting us bring this program forward. Chelsea?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like Bradley said, I'm Chelsea Flegger, I'm with Planning and MPO, and I'm here with Nico Probst from Lyme. We're here to give you an update on our Shared Mobility Pilot Program, to introduce you to Lyme's services and their proposed program for here in Waco. I wanted to start with a quick recap of where we are in the process. So, the latest RFP that was issued in October of last year, we received nine proposals to that, which we're really excited about. So, we interviewed three of the highest-scoring proposals. From that process, Lyme was selected as our top-ranked vendor, and they were notified early February of this year. As a reminder of the scope of the pilot program, it's for a limited duration, so one year with the option to extend for one additional year. It's in a smaller geographic area, pretty similar to our imagined Waco boundary, and we're proposing for Lyme to operate and manage that pilot program. Once that program does get started, the city's staff liaison, who will be the main interface with Lyme, will be Christine Miller, Traffic Engineer, Public Works Department, she's sitting here right behind us today. So, with that, I'd like to hand it over to Nico to tell you a little bit about their company and their plan for our Waco program.
Excellent. Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and present here. My name is Nico Probst, I am the Director of Government Relations for Lyme. We are really excited to be here, and we're excited to be working with the city of Waco on this exciting project. So, just a little bit about back, a little background on who Lyme is, and why we're here today. Lyme is the largest micro-mobility provider in the world. We operate in over 120 markets across the globe, in 30 countries, five continents, and we have built a wide set of experience in the space of micro-mobility that is really born out of our experience in dockless bike share. We started as a dockless bike share company in early 2017, and have really grown over time and seen the adoption of a number of different type of vehicles, but we're excited to hear today to talk about a shared scooter program, a program that we have a lot of familiarity with, operating in nearby Austin. And I think that is what makes this a very seamless experience. Having a warehouse and facility in Austin allows us to quickly scale. We've been looking for additional opportunities for growth in the broader central Texas region, because we have such a large facility and a great program operating in Austin, and Waco has made a lot of sense as the next step for us. But we're also excited to build a lot of, on a lot of the learnings that we've had in a number of markets, both through the technology and hardware that we're going to be bringing to the city. So, to sort of kick off, dovetail off of that, what you see here to my left are the two scooters that we'll be offering in Waco. What makes us a little bit different from some of the other scooter companies as well is that we develop all of our hardware in-house. We have the design management process within our own company, and then we have a scale production facility out in China that develops all these scooters. And we go through a number of tests that test the safety and durability of the scooters, and are really meant to be products that are meant for the shared economy space. I think when folks saw scooters come to fruition in the early outset of this sort of micro-mobility space, you tend to see the same small scooter that was typically a scooter that you could buy off of Amazon. And that's a great scooter for personal shared trip, or personal trip, but they're not meant for shared-use trips. And so, our scooters have really been developed with that in mind. The newest scooter, our Generation 3 scooter, the one that you see closest to me, is the model that is, the newest model that we brought to fruition, and then we've updated some key components to it that I think really speak to what we, as a company, take into consideration, based on the feedback that we're hearing from riders. So, it's got, obviously, bigger wheels, dual-side suspension, which really helps with the durability and ease of use of the scooter, and then really fine-tune GPS accuracies, so that we can institute some of the important geofencing components that we're going to talk about in this program. The other, I think, really important component to making a successful scooter program operate in cities that we partner with is really focusing on rider education, and that includes a multifaceted approach that includes everything of how we're training our users on our app through offline experiences and through engagement opportunities on social media. So, what you're looking at right here is the general tutorial that any user has to go through before they ever get on the scooter, and it obviously gives you the sort of rules of the road and understanding of where scooters can be utilized. If you notice on the far right, it also is dictating where the scooters may not be ridden. So, in coordination with the city, we've been developing geofence zones, areas where scooters can't be operated, or where scooters may not be able to be parked, or where scooters may be slowed down by our over-the-air technology. All of those components are listed in the app before the user gets on the ride itself. And then, obviously, hitting on a lot of the best safety tips is an important component of this, and we will be using all of our online tools, whether it be social media or email channels that we have with users, to ensure that rules of the roads are adhered to, and that users understand where these products should be going. We also do that with in-person community engagement events, and that's something that we've been talking about, the city about, and something that we're really going to be excited to launch on day one is something that we call our First Ride Academy. First Ride Academy is our opportunity to train riders who have maybe never been on a scooter, or riders who want a little bit more familiarity with a scooter by actually going out with our operations staff and getting some tutorials. We did a sort of mini version of that nearby, right across the hall over here, and had the opportunity to showcase the scooter to a few council members. This is something that will be replicating throughout the duration of the program, and ensuring that riders have the opportunity to get hands-on training for us. It's also a great opportunity for us to red dictate the rules to users. You know, sometimes, I think, bringing in new transportation service to communities can be a bit confusing for folks who have maybe never seen it before, and sometimes just a quick conversation of going through where the scooter should be parked, where they're to be utilized, how the, what the proper mechanics of the scooter rider looks like are really helpful tidbits that improve user behavior as time goes on. And then the other component that goes into our rider education efforts is obviously what's on the scooter itself. So, we have a number of components that we really hone in on to ensure that this is the safest and best experience for riders and non-riders alike. So, obviously, we want folks to wear a helmet, being 18 and older is a requirement in our terms of agreement, and then ensuring that scooters are one person to a scooter. And then, we can make rules specific to the city as time goes on. You know, we've seen the program sort of bear out new experiences, and we're able to customize local rules through hang tags, simple hang tags that go on top of the scooter, but a lot of those conversations come into fruition when we talk to the city and sort of hear the feedback that's going on, see how rides are occurring, see where the rides are occurring, and then discuss with our city partners how we can better curb user behavior, and putting some of those local rules into, the hang tags are a pretty simple way to address user behavior as time goes on. Quickly, want to get into how we actually manage the program. So, we will be building an on-the-ground operations team. My colleague Claire is here, she's going to be building out our team in Waco. She's based out of Austin, and that allows us to do this pretty quickly and pretty seamlessly, and we could pretty quickly get up and running within two weeks. If the city said go today, we'd be able to bring the scooters here, get them launched. But it's done because, it's done quickly because we have a team that has done this time and time again. A lot of this is built because we have a proprietary algorithm that tells us where best deployment locations are going to be for scooters, and that is based on sort of trip patterns and traffic patterns that we're seeing, and we're able to then alert our operations staff where to deploy those scooters on a daily basis. Our operations team is tasked with ensuring that the scooters come off the streets, are charged and collected, and then that allows us to manage the redeployment the next day, and ensuring that scooters are available for the morning commute. The hours of operation here will be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The scooter trips will end at 10:00 PM, and then that's where a lot of our charging mechanics go into play, and ensuring that the scooters are ready for the next day's use. This is the service zone, and this has been developed in agreement and partnership with the city. This is, so if you're looking at sort of the outline area, that is where scooters will be deployed within that area. The sort of big red blocks that you're seeing are where we'll be instituting no park zones or no ride zones. So, the geofence technologies have been discussed with the city, and we have a number of sort of geofence technologies that we've developed that we'll be utilizing here. So, our no park zones are areas where a scooter can actually be ridden to, but you can't physically end the trip there, and that prevents the scooter from actually physically being locked in that area. The rider can't physically end their trip, and their credit card continues to be charged as that trip is ongoing, and so that's obviously the turn mechanism to getting folks out of those no park zones into the areas they should go to. The ready areas, like Baylor University, are what we call no ride zones. So, the scooter actually is able to recognize when it's in a specific zone, and slows down precipitously to a zero mile-per-hour rate, so that the scooter actually can't be ridden. It doesn't happen instantaneously, so the user's not going to fly off immediately from the scooter, but it happens at a slow rate, and then they're alerted to go back into the service zone, so they can actually continue their trip. And then, in some areas in the city, we'll be instituting what we call slowdown zones, and that's where we actually reduce the speed to ensure that the safety of pedestrians who are using a trailway or walkway aren't having dangerous interactions with scooter riders. These are just a more detailed look into those specific zones, so Chelsea, I'm sure, can sort of go into the dynamics of each area and why they were developed, but we've already started instituting these areas into our app, and users will be able to see these zones as they scroll through our app. Some of the other components that we're going to bring into fruition, I think these are exciting components of the technology getting better and better as time goes on, really are geared towards helping manage parking behavior, so that users are not leaving scooters in the public right-of-way and creating a bad experience for non-riders. And so, these are some of the parking tools that we'll be utilizing in Waco to ensure that parking behavior gets better and better over time. What you're seeing on the far left with the in-app guidance is, in partnership with the city, we're going to be looking at developing what we call parking corrals, which are basically just a sort of set area of where we can deploy scooters, and users can consistently rely upon as a location to collect and end their scooter trips. We can list those parking corrals in the app, so users can do trip planning before they take the scooter off, but then we can also use signage that you're seeing in the middle to help sort of steer that behavior. And then, the other component to this is parking incentives. So, we can encourage folks to park in those locations, and then we're able to track back based on GPS locations, whether they actually parked there, and then incentivize them to do that through raffles, like giving them ride credits if they consistently park there. So, great opportunities to help better curb parking behavior, both through what we do on the ground, and then over our technology itself. And then, these are some of the really other important components of our technology that's improved over time. So, something that's become an industry standard, an industry standard that we set, is a feature that we call Park or Not, which requires users to take a picture of where they parked their scooter at the end of the trip. That does a couple of things. One, it nudges a user into the notion that there is good and bad, good and bad parking behavior, but two, that allows us to trace users' parking behavior. So, if we get a report or complaint of a missed-parked scooter, a scooter that's blocking the public right-of-way, we can actually trace back to the user who parked that scooter where, and then find them, and if solutions need to be scaled up, kick them off the app FBB. But we've developed, I think, some really exciting technology that allows us to, when the user's actually taking a picture of the scooter, it can detect if that parking job is done correctly, and nudge them real-time, so that the complaint doesn't even come to us beforehand. And then, of course, utilizing the parking incentivizations with the parking corrals that we develop with the city, we'll develop a parking loyalty program as time goes on. The other really important component of what we want to offer in Waco, and what we offer across every market that we operate, is a focus on ensuring that these scooters are available to everyone. And I think one of the really unique benefits of scooters is that because they're a dockless technology, we have the opportunity to scale them to parts of the cities that may not have reliable transportation offerings, and we want to make sure that the technology itself, or the payment components, aren't a barrier for users to accessing our programs. And so, that's why we developed a program called Lime Access, which allows for a discounted rate to any individual who qualifies for federal, state, local means needs assistance programs. It allows them a much discounted rate, 50 cents to a lock-in, 7 cents per minute, when the normal rate for a user is a dollar to unlock and 27 cents per minute. But it also has components that allow for folks who are unbanked or without a smartphone to access our scooters, and that's in partnership with a program called Pay Near Me. The other, I think, exciting component about what we'll be offering here in Waco are some couple local community components of this program. One is our Lime Hero program, which is an opportunity for us to partner with a local nonprofit, and this has looked a little bit different in every city that we've operated, but we want to find an organization who is really near and dear to the local community, and then we're able to feature them in our app and allow users to round up the remainder of their trip to that organization. So, if your trip costs $2.35, the remainder of that fare would round up to $3, $3, I'm sorry, and then that additional money would go to the partner organization that we feature. Of course, having the opportunity to feature the local nonprofit is a great opportunity for us to get the word about, word out about the great work that they're doing. But then, we're also going to be really focused on ingratiating our local team here, within the community itself, attending any local events, festivals, stakeholder group events, any opportunity that we have to educate riders and get them initiated with our product is going to be a great opportunity for us to get ourselves deeper into the community, but also allows the opportunity to find better deployment locations, or private partnerships of where we can develop opportunities to deploy more scooters and allow more users to get onto our product. This is the general schedule that we're looking at, so obviously, we're here and hoping that, in relatively short order, we'll be able to get approval. From that time, we will have about a two-week period, we'll actually get up and running. We're hoping to launch early April, end of March. We're targeting March 27th, but it's sort of a fluid timeline based on how things go here in the next few weeks, but we can get this program up and running very quickly because of our local operations team in Austin. When we do launch, whatever day that looks like, though, we will host a First Ride Academy, we'll invite the local media out, and that's a great way to showcase safety as the initiation to this program, and really get the word about, word out about proper ridership and how the program works. And then, as time goes on, we'll be working with the city on a monthly cadence to ensure that we're compliant with all the rules of the program, and that we're meeting the expectation the city has, but then also to solicit feedback that you all are raising, and feedback that you're getting from constituents, and ensure that we're fine-tuning the program as it goes along. And then, lastly, this is our team. Obviously, myself is involved. Claire, who is here, comes from our Austin team, but we have a great central headquarters team that's supporting this. And then, we're looking to hire a Waco operations manager, who will sort of be the local quarterback to run this program. And so, Claire is getting that ball up and running, she's actually interviewing folks yesterday and today, and so, we're making headway in that pretty quick here.
And with that, we'll take your questions. Thank you.
Well, and I'll kick it off, and just, this is probably a bit of revisionist history on my part, but I do remember when we first started this conversation a couple of years ago, I asked at least somebody in management, why can't we just contract with Lyme? Because I know, you know, your reputation with being a great, you know, corporate partner, your commitment to equity, your commitment to data sharing, and helping us support our infrastructure and mobility investment within our community is well-known, and I've known you and your team for years, and I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you.
And so, really, I mean, I don't necessarily know that I have much to say, because I kind of know what y'all do and the way you do it. But I would just like to make sure that in our agreement, and as we work together, that there is, not specific, but just generalized data sharing that allows us to understand kind of how, what the trips look like, what the usage is, where amongst, where we see, so we will know a better idea of opportunity for infrastructure investment and to help promote not only usage for y'all, but just, just better, better mobility, infrastructure, and accessibility in general.
Yeah, absolutely, and I should have included a slide on what the sort of dashboard looks like, but we will equip the city with our standard dashboard, which is developed in-house, which gives you a real-time look of what the scooter trips are occurring on a daily basis, where the trips are occurring, and it's for those exact purposes. It obviously creates a better business environment when cities have that data and are able to think about how infrastructure can better support this. It sounds like the city's taking on some great initiatives already, and we hope that this data supports that.
Fantastic. No, really, Nico and Claire, glad y'all are here. It's great.
And then, the data reporting requirements are going to be included in our scope of work with Lyme.
Okay, very good.
I'll just follow John's comments there, and I echo what John's saying, because I know that Lyme is recognized as an industry leader, and you have a lot of experience, and as you can, as your presentation demonstrated, you're tapping into technology and, in ways that maybe we don't think about, and locations and where people go, and how they slow people down, and it's fantastic. But I also appreciate, Chelsea, the process he ran through in trying to kind of relaunch this thing, and I think Lyme will do Waco a great job, and it's very important to the city now, as we kind of have a big tourist element, and I know that's, as people come here, that'll be, and as I'm able to do some travel, you see these scooters all over the place now, it's one thing to kind of do and have fun, and I'm excited about getting that going here this, this summer, this in 2020, it'll be great. Just questions on, again, part of this logic to me comes back to safety on the, on the scooters, and I'm trying to remember the logic from last summer when we were talking And I'm trying to remember the logic from last summer when we were talking about this, but does the city Waco already have guidelines and ordinances for the operation of scooters and where they can be and how fast you can go and helmets and age and...
So we did revise some of our ordinances last year. We clarified that scooters are not allowed to ride on the sidewalk. They are allowed on what we would call a shared use path. The Riverwalk is an example of that. We did not set an age requirement. It's pretty much industry standard for scooters to have an 18 and over requirement. And I think last year you also brought up a helmet question and we did some research from some of our peer cities in Texas and there aren't laws for adults to wear helmets. It's not required in Texas. And if that is something we wanted to consider, that should be something across the board and not specific to a shared use program.
Okay. Thanks, Chelsea.
Just real quick on the sidewalk issue, your GPS isn't refined enough to this point to be able to tell whether or not they're riding on the sidewalk, correct?
So we're actually piloting a test project right now in San Jose, California. It's obviously in our backyard, so that's why we pilot it there because we can check out the technology, but it's able to detect with a 95% accuracy rate if a user's on a sidewalk. The rate that we want to get to is obviously 100%. And so we're really trying to fine tune the technology and the hope is that we could actually change the scooter behavior based on the use of the sidewalk. And that's obviously a challenge that we've seen in a number of cities. And obviously that challenge is borne out because a lot of roadways have been developed for cars only and not for shared use paths. And so obviously that's why data sharing is a big component of this, because we do want to help cities develop better infrastructure that goes towards it. But we are developing technology that hopefully gets there. This, I think, pilot project is the first of its kind across the globe and we're really excited to see how the results bear out and then build out better technology as time goes on.
Which is why I'm glad we're partnering with you. But in the interim, while y'all are working on that, I just know other cities that have adopted these and brought them in for the first time where sidewalk riding still is an issue. There has just been, we just needed stepped-up enforcement. As long as, if we, if we hit it hard at the initial and really kind of make sure people know, don't ride on the sidewalk and there's some citation or something for that while they're doing it when they run afoul of our rules, particularly there on the front end, we can, we can learn from that. People will learn and they'll stop doing it, but it's just, that's, that's something on us that as we adopt these and bring them in that we might want to consider within this area, just to have a little bit more presence and be fairly deliberate and purposeful in enforcing that no sidewalk rule.
And I'll also just say a couple of quick things on the sort of sidewalk usage because I, the data has sort of bore this out, why riders ride on the sidewalk is clear because of the interactions on the roadway and feeling dangerous with car traffic. And that's where we have a role to play in ensuring that the rules are better communicated to users. And so as we see how the rides are occurring, if there are problem areas, we'll talk to the city, we'll work with our team to get them out there and ensure that they're talking to users as we see those sort of problem areas and then communicate the rules of the road to users specifically. I think one interesting thing about scooters is that they tend to galvanize a whole new set of folks who haven't been in a bike on the roadway before. And so they may not have even known the rules that bikes shouldn't be allowed on the sidewalk. And so we'll do double communication efforts, email, social media channels, really making sure that they have an understanding of where the proper rules and places that they should be riding these products are.
Great. Chelsea, Nico, thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate you being here today. I was introduced to Lime a couple of years ago in San Antonio, I believe, and so it's, I was very familiar with your product and so I'm like Councilman, Councilmember Carnard, I'm very glad that you are coming to Waco. Very good presentation. I just had a few questions, if, if, if I may. Explain to me, I believe you said Claire will be here helping with the launch. How long will Claire, will she be housed out of Waco temporarily or will she be commuting back and forth or how does that relationship look like?
So I think, well, I'll have to talk to her about this, about what her lodging situation will be, but usually when we launch a program, it's a pretty intensive effort and it takes everyone from myself to Claire, to other folks in our headquarters to get a launch lined up. And I think the most important component to a launch is getting the local team in place. And so that's why she's here today and was here yesterday and interviewing candidates to get that local operations presence up and running. But we're seamlessly able to do this quickly because we're operating out of Austin right now and she's got a great team built there that she's also able to take this project on simultaneously. And so we can do this very quickly, but her job will be made a lot easier by hiring someone locally and then building out a team from there.
And then where, have you guys picked a location as far as where your office, your main office will be here in Waco?
We're looking for a small warehouse to manage some of the fleet and so we're still looking at space right now, but for the immediacy, we have a 15,000 square foot warehouse based out of Austin where we do a majority of our repair and maintenance efforts across all of Texas in that warehouse. So we can easily bring the scooters from our Austin operation over there, retrofit them, get them ready to go from that location. And so this is a bit of a unique experience where we don't have to have an existing warehouse to get up and running. We can actually do both at the same time.
Okay.
And I'll also mention that Kendra Anderson, our property manager in office, has been helping Lime with, looking for some warehouse space.
Wonderful. Thank you. In the initial launch, how many scooters will we have here and does that number change with over time or as demand increases? How does that work?
So the initial fleet is going to be 100 scooters and then we're going to allow Lime to have up to 250 scooters provided they meet some requirements. For example, they'll have to show us the data that there's enough ridership to justify an increase. Anything more than that will be up for discussion. If we have a super successful program and we're seeing outstanding ridership numbers, there's some flexibility in the scope language to allow us to do that with authorization from the city first.
Okay. And, and if I just may add as a, as a side note, I was one of the few that tested the scooters beforehand and if I can just make a recommendation that we get the 3.0 more than the 2.5, it seemed just to be a little bit more user-friendly and had a more smoother ride. And so I'm definitely a fan of the 3.0 version of it. As far as hubs or charging stations, how many are we looking at here in this geographical location of the map that you showed us?
So we're working out the locations of deployment right now. Tend to, usually when we do deployments, it's usually, you know, you'll, you'll be on a street and you'll see four or five scooters in a, in one specific spot. The algorithm is sort of developed to sort of showcase where those locations should be. And so once we have sort of the set amount of scooters, we put that into the system. It tells us where those locations are at. So my guess is probably to start about 20 and then that changes over time. So what happens is the data comes into our algorithm system. It tells us where a lot of the trips are occurring, where the end and beginning destinations of the trips are occurring, and then it redevelops the algorithm. And so it's changing the deployment locations based on that data. And it may say deploy three scooters here versus four from the previous, previous day. And so that'll change over time, but it's about 20 scooters, 20 locations to start and we'll sort of scale from there.
Okay. And as the wear and tear increases or happens, you know, over the time for the scooters or the hubs, I'm assuming you are responsible for changing that out as well?
Yep. So when you actually take us trip, you actually have to review the trip. So five stars, you had a great ride, one star sends a huge flag to us. And when we get those one stars, the scooter's immediately shut off from the system and it comes out of the, the system. It sends an alert to our local operations team. They go collect it and then they take a look at the maintenance components of it. Obviously, we take safety very, very seriously. Every scooter is checked a number of times throughout the week to ensure that the brakes are working, the lights are working, but there's a lot of technology within the scooter itself that alerts our operations team if there's any repair, maintenance issues needed. And they quickly collect that scooter and ensure that's not available for rent from the system.
And I'll add that there won't be any like infrastructure installed for those preferred parking areas. We could have something like a simple A-frame sandwich board that will say parking here. Over time, if we find that there is an area or two that we're always going to be wanting to deploy scooters, we could potentially look at some of those like pavement stickers or decals, but for now, especially in the beginning, once we're getting our feet wet with this program, we don't imagine putting any infrastructure in the ground for the parking areas.
Thank you. I do love the program that you have, that you're going to launch here in Waco, which is Lime Access. How do people qualify for that or how do they know if they qualify for that?
Yep. So it's a pretty low barrier to entry. Any means needs assistance program, federal, state or local, if you qualify for it and you show us proof of purchase or proof of enrollment in the program, you qualify for it. And so we have a site already set up and we'll ensure that the city has access to it. Most cities, we have the ability to list that site on a public site so that users are aware of it. But then we also really want to partner with local organizations to ensure that the word gets out about that program because it is a really great opportunity. We want to make sure that folks have the opportunity to enroll, enroll in it. And then the program also gives directions to users who might be unbanked or without a smartphone, how they can actually access our scooters through our partnership with Pay Near Me.
Well, I, I think it's great. I mean, and so thank you so much for introducing that program here in Waco because I think it'll be very beneficial to people that live here and that can utilize this program especially to get to work if they, if need be. And so thank you so much for introducing that. And then the last question I'll have, and I'll be quiet after this, is Lime Hero, how does that nonprofit work or does it change after a year or is it just one that's picked at the beginning of the year and, and therefore good? How does that look like?
Yeah, no, it's, it looks a little bit different in every city. So some cities, we rotate the Hero partnership every three months. Sometimes we keep them for the duration of the program. It really sort of depends on the interest that we're hearing from local nonprofits throughout the city. We are open to any and all organizations, so we really welcome feedback from the community on, on organizations that may be interested in featuring within this program. You know, I think one of the great opportunities about scooters is that they really have an opportunity to connect local residents to their community in a broader way. And so we've had a number of different nonprofits as part of this program, everyone from bike advocacy organizations to homeless shelters. And every organization is an important part of the community and so our goal is really to localize our efforts and so welcome all community feedback. But I would assume with a year-long program, we'd probably rotate the partner at least a couple of times.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again so much for your presentation. I just, I know one of the things, and I, and I know the city attorney's office will be involved in this, but when it comes to insurance and liability and how that looks like, does it fall on the city of Waco? Does it fall on Lime? And so I know that was one of the questions that came up when we were looking at this originally and I don't know if it was ever answered and it might have been, I just missed it, but just as we think about that, as, as we move forward with this process.
Yeah, we're, we're actively negotiating the MOU with Lime and, and we feel like if the city gets its standard insurance and indemnity language, the city should be protected.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nico. Thank you, Chelsea, for this presentation. We have been working through this for quite some time. I was one of those novice riders today and I too agree with Councilmember Sabido, the three allows a little bit more stability for the people who are unfamiliar with the ride. I'm really excited about a lot of things in this. The geofencing capability is one of the things that, that really intrigues me, that there are areas that will be governed in a manner that the, the scooters themselves will just slow down because, you know, again, we've got some, some, some areas of town where we want to make sure everybody's as safe as possible. So that's one of the things that I'm really, really excited about. I know that Claire is, is mounting the team, but I'm curious, how large will that team be?
So it'll scale once we, you know, see how large the fleet is. So it gets bigger as we have more scooters. Obviously, it takes more staff to grow the program, but we're immediately looking to bring an operations manager. That operations manager will also bring an operations specialist. And then what we also do to manage our program is we use, utilize a program called Lime Juicers. Juicers are individuals who sign up to be chargers throughout the city. They get paid for every scooter that they charge. So it's a, you know, choose to work however much you want sort of type of program. The beauty of it is it's a really nice opportunity to make some extra side income. We really find the use case of it to be really successful and many times, our operations staff at the end of the night, when they go to collect the scooters, don't even have the opportunity to collect any scooters because the juices have already taken them off the streets. What we do, though, for an individual that signs up, they get three chargers from Lime to start and then they can increase the amount of chargers based on the amount of scooters that they're charging. So another great opportunity from an economic benefit, benefit component. We also see great partnerships with local community businesses who may be interested in signing up to be juicers. We see a lot of coffee shops sign up to be and it makes sense because they're opening up shop pretty early, typically around 5:00 AM. And so many times they can close shop up at nine o'clock, search in the app if there's any scooters nearby, bring them to their shop, charge them and then set them out in the morning when they open up shop. And then that'll sort of steers users towards their business, knowing that there are going to be a reliable amount of scooters in front of that local shop. So another great opportunity there. So the employment opportunities will certainly scale as the program increases, but that'll be the initiation to it.
Okay. And I saw the mention of, of partnering with community organizations such as the Chamber and, and those stakeholder groups and community events. I want to make sure that you know, there are three chambers of commerce in the city of Waco, so we want to make sure that you're actively engaged with all three.
Appreciate that.
African American Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber as well, because I think that that, that type of audience and ability to share this information will just increase the scale and scope as we look to grow, especially with our community businesses and local partners.
Absolutely. And I'll add to that, you know, we work in a number of cities with city council members for events that you all are hosting in your neighborhoods. We want to be at any and all of those, so feel free to let us know when you have events that make sense for us to attend and we're happy to showcase the scooters and get folks initiated to them.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm excited about it.
Well, thank you both for your presentation. I think most of my questions have been answered by the questions that my capable fellow council members have asked, but are bicycles out? Are they dead? I mean, are you still using bicycles in some markets?
We are still operating bicycles. We are a multimodal company, which means that we operate a number of type of vehicles. We've mostly been focused on scooters at the sort of the larger scale because the adoption rate, quite honestly, has been so high. We're typically in a lot of markets where we operate both, we tend to see eight, nine times amount of rides on a scooter versus a bike. But we do think that the bike still has a great opportunity, especially for longer distance trips. And so we're actually evaluating some new vehicle types that we're hoping to bring to market relatively soon.
And I'll say that for all of the nine proposals that we got, no one offered bikes.
Right, right. Things, I know this area is evolving rapidly. Do you have, have any idea what's next on the horizon besides just...
No, it's, it's a great question. I actually do think something that you're come, going to come see to fruition is sort of a hybrid between a bike and a scooter for those longer distance trips. I think we tend to see the average scooter trip to be about 1.3 miles globally and that tells us that's great for sort of the last mile issue that a number of cities are grappling with. But obviously there are a number of parts of cities that would like to have a longer distance. And a scooter trip over two miles tends to be a bit long and it's not the best use case for a longer distance trip. Rideshare might be a better use case, but we as a company are really focused on getting folks out of cars and an alternative form of transportation that's healthier for the environment. And so we're evaluating a number of options that sort of mimic that. We were beta testing a car share pilot with the hopes that it would become a swappable car share type of vehicle. To scale that, though, has been a bit of the difficulty, but we're looking at a number of different vehicle types. I do think probably the hybrid between a bike and a scooter is going to be the exciting next step.
Still.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Great. We're looking forward to having you guys roll this out in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have y'all here. This is awesome.
Thank you. Mayor and Councilor, our next work session, presentation is a discussion of the first quarter fiscal year 2019, 20 financials. We have Laura Cox, our Budget Program Manager, and Janice Andrews, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here today, uh, to review the first quarter fiscal year 2020 financial statements. As a reminder to those who may be listening, the city's financial year does go from October through September, and so these financial statements cover the city's operations for October, November, and December. So the first area that I'm going to focus on is the general fund. Uh, that is the largest fund of, um, that's where all the basic city operations are captured in the city's financial statements. So the general fund revenues, our major revenue source is property taxes. And so, as a reminder, based on the certified tax rule we received for FY20, our assessed value increased 7%. So we do expect an increase in collections, uh, from current year over prior year. However, they're still even a little bit ahead of that. Uh, but we are in conversation with, uh, the city's appraiser and, uh, collection, tax collection attorney to, uh, see where that continues to trend. Uh, these do fluctuate from year to year, uh, based on, uh, individuals and businesses income tax implications. Sometimes we see more collections in December if, if there's a, uh, income tax benefit to them, and sometimes it does shift to January. The other item that is a significant funding source and is trending extremely well is sales tax summary. Again, during the fiscal year 2020 budget process, we did, uh, push, uh, this a little bit higher than we had in previous years, um, still keeping it conservative by having a sales tax contingency, uh, set aside. But even with that increase in there, we are still collecting more than we had in, uh, the prior year, as you can see in the Y, uh, year-over-year percentage change column. Uh, for the first quarter, we are collect, like, we had collected 5.58% higher than we had in FY19. Uh, and then we are still over budget, uh, nearly 10%, uh, if you look at the second-to-last column. And going through, uh, February, that continues to perform well. This next chart is a summary of the first quarter of, uh, fiscal years 18, 19, and 20, again, the months October through December. Uh, the items that are included in, the very first line, 41 taxes is property and sales, so that's why you see that significant increase there, because our assessed value and our sales tax collections have continued to come in strongly. Uh, the other item I would like to bring, uh, your attention to is, um, item 48, other. Uh, there is the, that's the line that had the largest variance, and we did have two significant property sales in FY19 that we, um, don't anticipate having every year, and that's the variance for, uh, FY20, and why you see that decrease there. Um, and also, as a reminder, we switched slightly how we present our interdepartmental billings. We didn't previously have that as a revenue line item, but, uh, to more closely conform to generally accepted accounting principles, we have pulled that out of expenditures as a negative expenditure and shown it here as a positive revenue.
Laura, was that the same case for FY18? Uh, there is, I'm just noticing, even with the sale of FY19 under others, there's still a big difference in FY18 between FY20, and is there a specific reason why?
For other?
Uh, for other, yes.
Uh, nothing is coming to me.
We did, we did have a, a property sale in 18 as well, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As I recall.
Okay, moving on to the expenditures again for the first quarter of, uh, fiscal year 18, 19, and 20. Uh, the most significant, uh, line item here that you see a variance in is transfers out, and that is due to the focus on, uh, street infrastructure. We increased the transfer to the Cash CIP Fund for streets, uh, $3.2 million. And we also had an increase, uh, of the transfer to the Waco-McClennan County Economic Development, uh, committee, or council, and that was a increase of $250,000. So moving on to the other funds, uh, the one set of financials I did want to highlight is the utilities funds, and that includes water, wastewater, and the Waco Metropolitan Area Regional Sewer System, also known as WMRs. Um, the water and wastewater funds are performing extremely well. Uh, we may not remember, because it's been a few months out, and February has been extremely wet, but October through December were kind of dry. So we had, uh, some good revenues during those, uh, months, and even evaluating where we are through January and wrapping up February, they still continue to perform well. Uh, the WMRs fund is being closely monitored, uh, by city staff. This is the first year that we had, uh, metered sales, and we don't have a history to set up the allotments, so we'll can, we set those up equally throughout the year, not, uh, not having that history built up yet, but as that history comes in, and as we know more what the, uh, how those metered sales will perform, uh, we'll continue to monitor closely. And the other funds in, um, in the city are performing, uh, as expected or better. And that concludes my prepared remarks.
Any questions or comments?
I just, uh, have a couple. I like the presentation, the year-over-year. I don't think, I don't, have you seen it that way before? The, the three trailing years, first quarter? It's, to me, it's a great way to, to look at the
Yes, it is.
Different entries, uh, to see the progress from year to, and I know, versus budget, I know we're way ahead of budget on, on, so far in the first quarter, so to compare it to that, too, I think is important. Um, uh, everything's lining up well. First quarter looks great, in my opinion, and the utilities are just, are, are doing very well. I like to see, even though you have to kind of find it in the, in the, in the data, uh, that the two, kind of the initiatives that we had on, in the convention center and the zoo, if you look at some of the changes we made there structurally, um, I think we're seeing payoffs in the first quarter on the revenues. I think the revenues are up considerably in, in both, uh, endeavors, and the expenses are being contained as well. So I like to see that trend. I hope it continues throughout the year. But good, good report, Janice and Laura, thanks.
And, and I might mention, too, as far as the zoo, the gift shop, we took that over toward the end of November, so we didn't have a full quarter of activity, uh, for the city operations as far as the gift shop was concerned. So we're very hopeful we're going to have a strong spring break and, uh, a good summer for that operation.
It's a pretty impressive year-over-year, because the merch charges are up, and the charges for admission are, are up as, as well with the new, uh, pricing structure there.
Right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good, good report. Again, staff keeps expenses in line, revenues above. We're in great fiscal shape, and, uh, that's, again, something that doesn't happen overnight or by accident. So we appreciate all the hard work y'all, y'all do.
Thank you, and we will continue to monitor the assignments. We did have a budget amendment today that did utilize, uh, for rolling conferences, as well as some, uh, agenda items. So we're pulling down about 3.2 million out of the assignments, uh, with this first quarter amendment, and we'll continue to monitor that as we have other items come forward.
Sounds good. Thank you all for another great report. Really appreciate you.
Thank you, and as always, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any requests for future agenda items?
I do. Uh, a couple, uh, weeks ago, I think it was requested, uh, about the direction of the seat convention, uh, CVB, and where we're going with that, and I, I know we even asked for some background information of what that looks like, who's the responsibility, how does it look going forward, and that's, we, uh, just would like a follow-up with that if possible, if possible at the next council meeting, um, and just so we can see, we begin, we, we can begin digesting that information.
Yes, sir. We, we do plan on bringing you a complete report at the March 31st, uh, retreat.
Okay.
Uh, so there'll be a complete report there. If you, if you would like a interim report, we can do that.
I think an informal report maybe by the 17th would be great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will that report include a timeline for transition, proposed governance structure, and path forward for what we've requested?
Well, the report and March 31st will include that.
Will? Okay, thank you.
I had one comment, too, and I, I think we do this regularly in budget audit, but something, some update on the street pavement program, street improvement program. I know we've, uh, increased the, the, the commitment there considerably over the last couple of years, and just kind of how we're coming along, uh, what's, what's happened in, in the 2019 budget, did we get everything finished that we wanted to, particularly as we're cranking back up here in the spring and, and, uh, launching into the new street, uh, programs. Just, just a summary from, I guess Jim Rine, uh, gave a great summary last year. I just want to make sure we get that on.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Anything else? Okay, we will now recess work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:37 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Text of the Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Two, real property, Text of the Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And economic development, Text of the Meetings Act, Section 551.087. Multiple city-on-tracks on and around the former Floyd Casey Stadium site. And three, economic development, Text of the Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 4:37 PM.